Good evening, everyone, and this is a regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Wednesday, January 16, 2025. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Publics Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and sending a copy to the Montclair Times, Star Ledger, and Herald News. This is a public hearing in which any members of the public are welcome to attend. The meeting agenda is available on the Montclair website, as is a link to the township's YouTube channel where the hearing can be viewed live or after the fact. The hearing is also being televised on Channel 34. And we have one change to the agenda. The hearing for application 2907-627 Valley Road is being postponed to February 5, 2025.
That's without further notice.
Without the need for further public notice. Thank you. I'll call the roll. Chair Harrison?
Here.
Vice Chair McCullough is not present. Mr. Caulfield?
Here.
Mr. Church?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Moore is not present. Mr. Simon?
Here.
Mr. Vera is not present. Ms. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
And Mr. Cruz is not present. Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Okay.
All right, the next order of business is to elect a chair for 2025. Is there any nominations?
On page Harrison?
Is there a second? Mr. Church? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. McCullough, who thought he was going to be here at a health issue this evening, so he said he couldn't come, but said if you want him, he's willing to serve as vice chair again. But so.
Nominate Mr. McCullough.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have the minutes from the December 18 meeting.
What about the secretary and assistant secretary?
Oh. Can we do them together?
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be someone move for Janice to be secretary and Zainab to be assistant secretary.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tell Janice she has the great honor of once again serving as our secretary. We have the minutes on page two. The line, well, 38 technically, the resolution for Woodmont Road, I'm abstaining. Then page six, line 207, it should be, it should be Ms. Hubert. And then on line 209, it should be that two public hearings were held. And then in line 210, following Open Publics Meeting Act and Municipal Land use law requirements. And then on page 10, on line 399, replace included with resembled. And then page 401, delete the phrase "who was initially in favor." And then on line 402, after, for something to be done, put "on the property." And then on line 403, that whole phrase, also discuss the link through pointing, delete that. And so it'll just read the board. I have to make this English, huh? Oh, also pointed out that this is a single-family dwelling neighborhood. And then on line, on the next page, on line 405, insert, after providing, put "one affordable housing," and then insert the word "unit." Anyone else with any changes to those minutes? If not, someone will move the minutes with those changes.
I'll move the minutes with the changes.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
And we have the resolution for 400 Orange Road. I don't have any changes for that. Does anyone else have any changes?
No.
Not someone want to move the resolution?
We're in the at the fallibility of the last meeting.
Yeah, who voted on it?
Yes. Everybody said Mr. Cruz and Mr. Griffith and Mr. Cruz.
And Ms. Harris wasn't here.
So we need a motion to move the resolution.
Yes.
I make a motion to move the resolution.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And then we have a request to extend the approval for the Barkley application on 137 Walnut Street. This will be the fifth and final extension. Does anyone have any comments, discussion on that request?
How long is this extension for?
One year. It's, and Municipal Land use law, it's from the date the resolution was adopted originally. So it was adopted November 4th, so this would take them until November 4th of 2025, this year.
Is that five a hard limit or is it?
That is a hard limit, having fun with a client on that issue.
Motion to extend the application?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The first application is a continuation of the public hearing for the property at 26 Orange Road, Mercury Montclair LLC. Mr. Tremblak, are you?
All right, well, you're getting settled. I'm going to swear Zainab in for the two hearings tonight. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
Would you state your name and position with the municipality?
Zainab Kazmi, Assistant Planner.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Happy New Year, everyone. Alan Tremblak appearing on behalf of the applicant, Mercury Montclair LLC. Be helpful if I got the right file. As you know, this is a continuation of the hearing that we commenced on December 4th involving property located at 26 Orange Road, which is in the R2, two-family zoning district. Property contains a three-story, non-conforming mixed-use building with office space on the first floor and three residential apartments on the second and third floors. The application is to, we're seeking site plan approval as well as a use variance to convert the first-floor office space to a fourth residential dwelling unit in the building. At the hearing in December, unfortunately, our architect was not able to attend that meeting. We tried to go forward without him, but the board had a number of questions and concerns, legitimate ones, I should add, regarding the floor plan that had been submitted. So in view of that, we adjourned the hearing and we're here tonight to, with the architect who's ready to testify. And also, since the last meeting, and again, partially in response to the planner's memo as well as concerns and comments raised by the board, the floor plan was revised significantly and we've reduced the apartment, the proposed apartment from three bedrooms to two bedrooms and many other changes which the architect will address. Following the architect's testimony, our final witness will testify, and that's William Stimmel, who is a site engineer as well as professional planner for the application.
Sorry, just noting for the record that Mr. Moore has arrived.
Just in time. Okay, so if I can have, I'm gonna, I'm not going to try to pronounce his first name.
Yeah, my name is.
How about I swear you in, then you're gonna give us today.
Mr. Pang. Do I need to stand up here?
No, you can stay right there. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
Would you state your name and address to the record?
My name is Xiao Xuan Pang, address 36 South Monroe, Melbourne.
Okay. Hang, would you start by providing the board with your educational background and your professional qualifications?
Definitely, definitely. So again, my name is Xiao Xuan Pang. I hold a bachelor's degree of architecture and I hold a master's degree of urban and regional planning in Virginia Tech. I start my professional career starting from 2010 and I'm licensed in New York and New Jersey starting from 2015. I'm also a zoning board member of the neighboring township of Melbourne. Yep, that's my credentials.
Okay. And is your license as an architect in the state of New Jersey in good standing?
Yes, and active.
Okay. So Chairman?
You're all acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, you prepared the original floor plan for this application.
Yes.
Correct? And you also recently submitted a revised floor plan, correct?
Yep.
And just so the record's clear, I believe the date of the revised, the original plan, I think, was undated, but the revised plan has a, an issue date of December 11, 2024. Is that correct?
That's been submitted from last time, right?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so what I'd like you to do, and you can use the projection screen if you wish, is to just run through, you go through the floor plan, revised floor plan with the board. And as you're doing that, perhaps you can point out or identify the more significant changes from the original plan.
Yep.
And just so it's clear, because the, after the last hearing, there was a floor plan prepared that's dated January 2, 2025. Isn't that correct?
Yep, that's the plan showing on the screen.
Okay. And then there was a subsequent plan that's floating around called an alternate plan with a date of January 14, 2025, which I assume you're going to refer to in your testimony.
Yep.
Okay, just to make sure.
We'll go with both of them.
I know we have. Go ahead.
If you don't mind, I'm going to stand up.
Yep.
Just take the microphone if you need it.
Hello, check, check. All right, cool. As, I'm going to use the, there's a pointer to easy, to navigate through the presentation. On the left-hand side, no matter which drawing I'm submitting, it's the same. It's depicting the existing condition of the drawing. And even though the previous floor use is actually office, if you look at this plan, this is one office, second office, this is a meeting room, and then that's another office and another office, but you can see there's two bedroom here. So it's actually more intended to a residential layout instead of office. So based on that, the revised plan is trying to inherit as much as we can of that building, but trying to make it meet building code. This plan, it's been revised from the last plan according to the board's comments.
There's a question for a board member. This is the January?
Second.
2, 2025 plan, correct?
This is a, it's been dated both here and here. If I record it correctly.
Right-hand corner of A101. It says date 0102, 2025.
Yep, that's correct.
And that's the same date that's up on the insurance schedule up and down. About halfway up.
Yep, yep, that's correct.
That we're looking at right now?
Yes, that's what we're looking at right now. All right. What we have done is converting or combining the front of these two rooms into a living room, and then we have one bedroom, second bedroom there. The first point I want to make is we did not change any egress system from the floor and the floor above. And originally, before this plan, we have the back egress at this corner. We have one entrance here to that definitely satisfies, satisfies saying the egress requirement. So one of the comments from last time is that we don't want to go out through a bedroom, right? So we take that into our consideration and we are changing that. So if you see the egress is coming from this corridor, make a left and going back to the left-hand side from the, to the rear yard. The front definitely is staying the same. So that's one of the major change from the last, last time. And the second comments from the last time is about the windows, right? For bedroom one and bedroom two, there's a comment about the windows. And as you see from the bedroom one, there is existing windows there, two of them from the, if we're looking at this one, it's the right-hand side. Currently, I have to say, it's, we need to verify whether that's a, can be served as an egress window or not, but along the way, we would definitely make sure one of them is an egress window, which means like the firefighting and break in and help people. So it's meet, it will meet the code. For this building, and if we're looking at current layout, on the left-hand side with a diagonal line, that's actually the staircase going to the floor upstairs. And this room is actually right behind it, so that means it leave us no choice to add egress windows there. There is, according to our building code, let me see, it's 2021 International Residential Code R3110.1. We do need to provide egress windows to any sleeping units, except if this building it's fully sprinkler or not, right? So currently it's not, but I've talked with the client, we would like to make it a fully sprinkler building. So in that case, it's actually much better than having an egress window there. So this is a brief introduction of this layout. I'm going to switch to the next one.
Before you do that.
Yep.
I think it's fairly clear, but you've got two entrance doors in the front of the building, and the one on the right is for the first floor, is that correct?
This one is actually for the second floor and third floor.
That's on the left side.
Yep, it's not connecting to this unit.
Right, okay. At the, at the rear of that crosshatched area on the left side, where there's an angled right there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's currently a door there, is that, is that correct?
On the outside, we can see there's a door, but it's being connected to this corridor, right? But this door connecting to the corridor is not going to benefit anything about this egress window.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, but is that door going to remain?
Yep.
Okay. But that door only provides an entry point.
To the upstairs.
Upstairs.
Upstairs, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then just in the rear, you, I know you mentioned this briefly, but you're showing one door there in a different location than the original plan.
Yep. If we look into the existing plan to the left, this door has been hatched and demolished and will be relocated to here, which is showing on the plan in the middle.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. You can continue.
Yep. Now, because I definitely want to open the conversation saying that why do we want to have an egress window to the bedroom? I do see the benefit of having a windows to a sleeping unit, right? But based on this floor plan and the resources we can have, we either lose the windows for a sleeping unit or the living room, right? So with that said, I also quickly do this desire option to alternate the living room location and the bedroom. In this desire option, yes, we can have a window, if I'm pointing here, it has an existing window there, right? We can definitely make sure that is an egress window, have the required size, have the required rating of the material, and make that as a egress window, right? So right now, I'm presenting to alternation. I've talked with the client, client actually prefer to have a fully sprinkler system, so, but no matter how, we presented this option to the board, so hopefully the board can consider it.
All right, just so it's clear, the drawing that's on the screen now that you're referring to is entitled zoning application plan alternation.
Alternation, yeah.
A102, and I believe that has a date of January 14, 2025.
13, yep, 13, I believe.
Okay. All right. So. 14, January 14.
14, okay, yeah.
Okay, I think I cut you off. You were about to say, were you about to say that the client prefers?
The fully sprinkler system, because considering it is a four-unit housing, right? If it's above two-unit of the housing, from a professional perspective, I would recommend the client to go with a fully sprinkler direction as well. And she's fully on board, she want to make sure everybody live in this building, we have a safety, the top safety protection, all right? And the rest of them from the egress from the back is the same as the previous option. Yep. So I'm willing to take any questions.
No further questions.
I have one for a question. Yes. You mean, did you survey it wrong?
Well, there's, well, when I get started with this project, right, the survey information is not there. So all those measurements is coming from the interior side. Once the survey get in, it's leave me too limit of the time to adjust the survey. Right now, what you're seeing here is have been revised to the survey, so if reflecting to the true situation as best as we can.
Well, actually, Mr. Caulfield, our next witness can testify to that, who's our engineer who actually reviewed the survey, discussed it with the surveyor, so. When I can agree with her, I will go down.
The survey actually, as Mr. Stimmel can testify, is actually correct.
Thank you for showing the revision. I just find it interesting that the client would prefer to install a full building sprinkler system, which is quite expensive, as opposed to just making egress windows.
Yep, he, he is very generous and he is definitely an elegant person. He would like, it's not my first project with him, he would, she would like to make everything by code and then even better than that. I have multiple conversation with her.
Okay, just if they don't go with that option and you go with the alternate plan.
Yep.
Also need to make sure that those windows are the proper height above the ground.
The size, the height, and the material.
Okay. Just question for Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Harrison, do we have to specify the number of bedrooms that we're approving with this residential conversion?
Yeah, I mean, this application's in front of us, so they've indicated it's two bedrooms and two bathrooms, and that's how the resolution would read.
Okay. But we have to specify the number of bedrooms and the resolution.
If you want to, I know, that seemed to be a point of the board at the last meeting that they, there was a preference for this two bedrooms, so consistent with what the board wanted, that would be the two bedrooms. I mean, I'm less concerned about whether it's two or three bedrooms, but seem to be a board concern.
I am too. I just think once they get into the building department, they're going to realize there's more limitations here than they expect. This might be just a very large one-bedroom and would prefer not to see this application.
We could address that in a condition that would permit them to do otherwise, if that's the way the board wants to go.
Okay, thank you. No further.
Ms. Grant?
No question.
Mr. Moore? Mr. Simon?
Just a point of clarity, in, in the hashed area in the, towards the back door, what is that?
Well, that's staircase going to the second and third floor.
So it comes down, that's on the back half, so that just goes down the stairs and can go right out the back door. Will they also have access to that hallway? Because the hallway seems to go directly into the first-floor unit.
Which hallway you're referring to?
Hallway four, that's directly opposite the back door.
That, that one, it could potentially be a shaft with all those running ducts.
Say it again?
That, that one could be the duct going through the bin, the building, so it's not accessible.
So that, so that striped area is the stairway coming down?
Just make sure we're talking about, maybe you can just use your pointer to make sure we're talking about.
So are you talking about this shaft?
Yes, yes.
That is, I believe that is not accessible from the interior of this unit. Currently, you can only have a closet here, and then it's going out directly.
Going out, I'm, I'm not following, because at the, what I'm looking at, it opens, the door opens out, but if you were to walk down that hallway, you could turn directly into the unit, no?
This unit?
Yeah.
No.
Where's the barrier?
Pardon?
Where's, I don't see how it's separated or blocked off.
In here, if you see a small door here, that is actually a closet right now. That's not going outside, it's not going to the staircase. That's actually a closet. So if the hash area have a door, it's going out and connecting to the upper floor.
Am I the only one not getting this? I'm not, so you're saying this is a closet?
Right now, yes, this area. But I, I have to, I have to put a disclaimer here as well, because originally, the survey is on, I mean, measurement is only on the first floor, right? So this is, this area is not related to this unit. That's something I can confirm.
So is there, isn't there currently a door from the existing office into that hatched area?
This, this door?
Yes.
Only have a closet. That's a very small closet.
Where, could you show on the plan where the, the wall of the closet ends?
It's just around here. There's a, there's a wall here, but because we are not touching that space, so I hedge it up.
So that closet will remain in either plan?
Yep.
But you said it's not accessible.
From the.
So it's a closet for the first unit?
Yes.
But the rest of the space is be blocked off? Because you said the closet ends.
That, yep, if, if you look, follow my, my pointer?
Yeah.
This area, tiny area, will be a closet.
That's accessible to the first floor?
Only accessible to the first floor.
And the rest of that space is to the second floor?
Yes.
Got it, okay. So now on the, the other, the long hallway that goes from the front door, you're saying there's a door at the end of that hallway that goes outside?
This door is, is there going to the second and?
What's on the other end, it's just an empty space?
This area?
Yeah.
Fairly honest with, with you, I did not get into that area.
Saying?
But I did not get into this area, but from the inside, it's not connecting with the current unit.
I understand that, but it's saying, once you walk to that door and you walk to the end, what's at the end? Is there a door outside or no? Because you said that's the staircase to the second floor, correct?
Yep.
So what's at the end of that? Is it just a staircase and a dead end?
I, to be honest, I don't know about that, because it's not related to this unit.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Cool.
So when you draw a floor plan, you cut the section through the building at about three feet off the ground, or you pick a certain elevation, you cut it?
Typically, for.
And then you draw everything at that level? And you've chosen, let me finish, let me finish.
Sure.
You've chosen to not show us chunks of the plan because you've had. You've chosen to not show us chunks of the plan because you've hatched it, and I find it kind of incomplete to show me a hatch and then tell me what's there when you are drawing floor plans and you're a registered architect.
So I've been working from 600-meter tower to residential to right now the biggest building in New York City. That is a typical practice if that area is not related to the unit, right? But from a professional standpoint, unless we are talking about a unit above this floor, this is not related to this unit.
It's, you, when I started, I explained, you cut the section to a certain height above the ground and you show everything at that level. So for instance, let's talk about the closet to the left of hallway 04. There's a door going in there and it's all hatched. Your verbal description is that the part near the door is actually accessible closet space for the people on the ground floor, and the part below the door is quote-unquote "used by the second floor"?
This area, yeah.
How could they use that space if they're on the second floor and this is on the first floor? I don't understand.
This area, you mean?
No, up at the top where the closet is, that area. So where the door is at the top, it's a three-foot wide closet. It's about, I don't know, 12 feet long. Is that whole three-by-12 closet, a closet space accessible for the first floor?
Partial of it is accessible.
Which part?
It's aligning with this area.
So there's like a three-foot by four-foot closet at the end?
Similar, yeah.
And what's in the rest of the hatch space?
That hatch space, it's been blocked from inside.
Is what?
It's been blocked from inside, I won't be able to get access to it.
It's closed off, you're saying it's dead space?
Dead space, yes.
And nobody knows what's there?
At least right now, not until we open the wall, we won't be able to know what's inside.
It's a, the wall, is it a masonry wall?
I don't know. It's, right now from here, it's a gypsum wall, right? But no matter it's a mason wall or a gypsum wall, not until we open it up, we won't be able to see what's inside.
I would say at least you should have shown the wall that defines the closet that's accessible.
I can update that, sir.
So now let's talk about the larger hatch space below there on the left. So you've said that that doorway opens to a stair that goes up to the second level. So is that the only place you can get to when I open that door from the street? Is a stair to the full width of that closet and of that slot and go up? Or is there a way around the stair to get underneath it?
I cannot speak too much of the detail in this hatch area, that's why I'm hedging it, right? But this is the unit that we are talking about. And if you have specific requirement, I can definitely verify it. And if you have any concern, the relationship between this staircase and that unit, I can try to explain.
I'm concerned because I want to see the whole plan. I think if you're asking me to evaluate a plan, I want to see the whole thing. I don't want to have part of it disguised from me.
Understand, I understand.
So to ask you a few questions, if I may.
Sure.
At the top of that hatched area on the lower left, the angle, the angled part there, no? Right there, there you go, bingo. Somebody said there's a door there? Yeah?
From the outside, you can see a door there.
From the outside in, and where does that door lead to?
That door is, what I can confirm is not leading to this unit.
What?
It's not leading to this unit.
Where does it lead to?
I have to confirm.
Does it go to the basement, does it go around the stair in the front?
I have to confirm on site if that's the case.
So I ask that because if it goes under the stair and gets to the front door, you could potentially make that a vestibule from the street and provide egress from your backyard through that space with a minimum of alteration.
You mean?
Maybe, I don't know, I can't see it, I don't know.
Well, egress window has to connect to the outside and public way right away. It cannot go through any enclosed space.
So you have a bed, yeah, so you have a bedroom in the back that has an egress window on the other side of the plan, right-hand side of the plan?
You mean here?
Windows right there, so where's the public right-of-way that I get to from there?
It has, it has space between this wall and adjacent property. That is open space. And from here.
You have to get to the public right-of-way, that, to me, that's the sidewalk, no?
You are right.
And you'll have to walk across the property line to get there, no?
And a yard.
Sorry?
And a yard. It has to connect to the public right-of-way or the yard of your property. So side yard is a yard, right?
The property line's right against the side of the building there. There's a concrete side, on the right-hand side where the angle comes in, right?
So that's why I propose a fully sprinkler system.
There, right? It's, looks to be about three feet wide, and along that, and in that angled wall is a masonry opening that's been filled in.
The size of this angle, I cannot guarantee it's big enough for egress windows. We have a square footage requirement for egress windows. And from the site condition, I have the fully 3D scan on my phone if you want. I can present that if you want me to present that.
Just to be, I'm talking about the one on the other side, right?
Right here.
That bedroom, yeah, and I'm talking about the angled wall that you come down from there. See where the stair is in the lower right-hand corner? The stair, in the lower right-hand corner.
Right here.
That one. If you go straight up from there, there's an angled wall on the exterior.
Here.
Right there.
Yep.
There's a masonry opening there that's been filled.
Okay, yep.
Right? And you could have a door there, and you could make a vestibule that connects that to the front. I only ask this question because it strikes me as it would provide a safer means of egress for the people that are getting out the windows of their bedroom.
Are you talking about the alternation or talking about the original plan?
Sorry?
Are you talking about this alternation plan dated January 14, or are you talking about this plan dated on January 2nd? Which is this one? This bedroom doesn't have any windows. And you're talking about adding a window here, right?
I'm asking about putting a door there that would allow egress. In your new plan, that's all I want to talk about, your new plan.
You want to put a door here to get out, right?
You'd have to put a vestibule in the space around the stair that connects that door to the front door, and they'd have to exit through that vestibule. But at least, at least you've managed to get people from the backyard to the sidewalk on your property.
So, so we are not talking about any egress window anymore? We are talking about, are we still on the topic of egress window, sir?
I'm trying to get him out of the backyard.
You want to get to the backyard?
I want to get from the backyard to the street.
And right now, you're concerning the people cannot get through this here, outside of the bin, of the wall?
Yeah, you don't, not without stepping over the property line and walking across the neighbor's yard.
You're definitely right.
If they put up a fence, then you can't.
I bring this up to the client as well, and that's why we, I believe our client hire a landscape designer, we can coordinate that. And I specifically bring this up to our clients in that there's a comments from the last meeting that to close both of this door, right? And I was telling them, if we close it out, the backyard is completely waste. That's why we are alternating to this side and still provide access from at least this unit.
My last point will be that in your floor plans, in the back, there's a wood stair, there's two columns, there's a deck. You don't show that in your floor plans, neither your existing nor your new. It's shown up in the survey that you provided.
Yep, that's, so if I want to say this is an interior alternation, right? And this meeting is talking about land use, pardon me, right? So I would like to do my best to help you to adjust any concern if you have, right? Have you talked about the backyard, yes, we can update that, and that's, that will be designed along the way.
Doesn't make, doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry. I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Let me do my concern, which somewhat is the same as Mr. Griffith's concern, but a different reason, I'll do this more in-depth with Mr. Stimmel. But one of the issues we raised at the prior hearing was how is the rear yard going to be maintained? And it's largely Mr. Stimmel's problem. But the question I have for you is, one of the concerns we had was, you know, was someone going to have to bring a lawnmower or whatever through the building? But now you're telling us that there's an existing closet right by that, the new proposed rear entrance. And but as has been pointed out, we don't know the size of that closet to know whether that's an area where, you know, whatever would be stored to properly maintain the backyard, which would not mean it wouldn't have to go through the whole apartment. And so what is the size of that? You know, where is the wall you're talking about that separates the closet? You know, I'd like to know the size of that to know, you know, can we require that that be used for equipment to maintain the rear yard?
I understand your question. At this moment, I will say we will update that wall in the plan. But from my perspective, that's belong to this unit. And the backyard, we have to define whether, who is going to maintain it. And if you're considering storing the maintenance equipment, we would be able to probably utilize some of the hatch area. But again, that's going to be the next step. That's going to be, from my perspective, I have to considering and revise accordingly.
So Chairman, I just want to point out, Mr. Stimmel is prepared to address the lawn and the maintenance. Yeah, I just wanted to deal with the interior of the building with the architect. The, and what you're indicating is that the applicant's preference is to go with the January 2nd plans rather than having the one-bedroom moved to the front of the building as shown on the later plans.
Yep.
At the, and as Mr. Griffith said, the survey and the photo show that there's a stair at the rear of the building. Does that go to the second floor, I assume, because it wouldn't need to? I mean, I don't, is that a usable stairway that gives them access to the rear yard?
You mean the staircase?
It's over on, as you're facing the building from behind, it's on the left side, right side of the building as you're facing it from the front.
I have to verify that.
And to repeat, and you have, you don't know what's in the space, the hatched area that's on the left side at the front two-thirds of the building, is that correct? Other than there's a stairway there?
Yes.
Any other questions from members of the board?
I'll just comment to the Chair's point. It's hard to make a determination with not knowing what's on the other side of the wall. We've seen applications where an applicant will come back after many years and ask to expand with, I guess, the existing space or the adjacent space. And that's a lane where potentially approving where it's unknown down the line, it could turn into something like that, right? So I guess we just want to be clear. And also see if there's an egress possibility as well as Griffith, my colleague Griffith mentions as well, you know?
Yep, understand.
And safety, right, and sprinklers are great, but if you've got to get out.
Well, well, by building code.
Sure.
Right, we provide adequate egress solution for this building and this unit. And plus, we are willing to put sprinkler system there. Sprinkler system according to current building code is probably the most security method to protect the tenants in the space, right?
But the area zone, it's a, it's zone for two families, right?
Understand.
And now it's jumping to a potential four-family.
Understand.
So there's reason for that.
Yes, so we leaning towards a fully sprinkler system. Even it's 100-unit of apartment, sprinkler system should sufficient. Thank you for your comments.
Just one quick question too. You're showing the location of the door now, the rear door. Exists, there currently exists two condensing units right there. Where will you relocate that? Yeah, no, no, the exterior door that you showed.
This one?
There are actually two, from the photos and the planner's report, there's two condensing units there. Where will you?
We can relocate that if you have a concern.
Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? Want to call your next witness?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is actually call my client who can I think answer a lot of the questions the board had of the architect. I'm going to recall Jirong Chang testified at the last meeting.
Okay, you understand you're still under oath?
Yes.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jirong Chang. My address is 331 Lafayette Avenue, Chatham, New Jersey, 07928.
Julia, you heard the questions that the board had to do with the hatched areas and the closet and the rear doors and all. Can you?
Yes.
Answer some and provide some clarity?
Sure, sure, may I?
Yeah, sure. You have to use the microphone.
Hello, okay. Sorry. So basically, this is like a hallway that leads up to the second floor. And then like, right here, this is basically, when the stairs goes up, there is the hollow space. So we just keep like, nothing there right now. I don't think it's really usable because like, this is the stair, like, this is the hallway and then the stair turn into here. So this is just like a space that go like that to go up to the stairs. And then basically, the windows that you guys see on the picture is the window right here. So this is the window that is on the hallway that is not related to the first unit. So this, basically, this door is going to the hallway, go to hallway, go up all the way to the second floor. Now, the first floor is here, right? So here, this is the stair that go to the second floor. And this is the door that leads to the first floor right now. The space that's right down here on the hashtag is basically, again, it's like you go up on the stairs. There is, the space also go from low to the high. So I just keep like water there right now, my drinking water. So the second floor cannot get out from there for sure because like the stair basically from the second floor will cover that space. So they cannot access to that. That's really just access for the first-floor, first-floor residents. So that's where they're going to. The current existing plan is we have like the closed wall right here, right? This is the door that's going to the backyard. The proposed plan is we're going to close, basically, close it. So like the bedroom is not directly going to the backyard. And then like the door is going to remove to here. Again, the hashtag right here is where the stair space going up. So I don't think it's a usable space. I would just put as a storage. I would just put as a storage. Then, I believe, like, the concern is like, right here, that is like, the deck going down to the first floor. That's the deck from like, the second to the third floor coming down to the backyard, but they cannot get into the unit, for sure. Like, that stair going to the backyard, but because like, the wall basically ends right here, right here. So like, that stair, stair is like, basically, what we see from outside, like, the deck, that's where the deck is, and there's where going to the backyard. So there's two condenser, yes. There's two condensers. Currently, that's located like, right here, right here, that is for the first floor unit. I believe we are going to keep the condenser there, just for the ventilation purpose. And then like, the third floor condenser is on the roof. Yep. What other questions do we have?
Can I just go back to the closet, you know?
Which class, this one?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
The question, how big is that closet? Is there a wall somewhere in the middle of that hatched area, or is that hatched area all the way up? Is that like, underneath the stair?
It's underneath the stair, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's very tiny. It's like, maybe, how, was that, three feet? That's it. It's not really usable, because when you go to deeper, you have to basically bend over, because like, the stair go onto that way. So like, right now, I don't think it's, we're not using it at all right now currently, and I think we're going to keep it closed to, it's just, because it's just where the staircase goes up. So I'm not thinking to do anything here. Yeah, it's just keep it as it is.
All right. And there was a question regarding the door that's at the back end of the hatched area on the left?
This one?
No, no, on the angled piece there.
This one?
No, no.
This one? Which door?
You go to the hatched area where the stairway is.
This one?
Nope, the other side.
This one?
Yeah.
Let me show you, I'm glad I made photos of this. I actually have a photograph.
Which door? You mean, right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hold on. Let me...
Why don't we, is this a photograph?
Mr. Trevi, why don't we...
Yes.
Why don't we mark that alternate plan as Exhibit A1 that was just submitted? And whatever you have next, we'll do as A2, if you just describe it.
This is a photograph of...
Is this the door, this door? Yeah, okay. So, okay. Sorry.
Oh, that's, okay. That's a one-story extension.
So, sorry, Mike, was that A2?
Yeah, we marked that alternate plan, that A102 is, Sheet A102 is A1. And now this exhibit, this photograph that you just handed out to the board, we're going to mark that as A2, so if we can just get a description of that, it's a photo of one.
Okay.
Explain what that photograph...
Sure. So this photograph is a door that's right here, like, right here on the hallway. So basically, the third floor tenant, they will walk down from this hallway, and there is a door right here, which they could get out. So basically, for the third floor, like, this door is, this door is like, right here on the hallway, going up to the third floor and the second floor. So it's not related to the first floor at all. So like, that door is like, right here, right here. That door is like, right here.
Yeah, I think that, like, the drawings are not complete, and you're asking us to imagine a lot of things that we can't see, so it's really hard to evaluate the plan. I know you're saying that it has nothing to do with the first floor, but without seeing it on the plan, it's hard for us to say it has nothing to do with the first floor. That's why, to Mr. Griffith's point, you show everything, even if it's not related, you can put a note on the drawings to say it's not related. But you're asking us to imagine a lot, and it's difficult to do.
Got it. Yep, understood. We'll definitely update the plan for sure. But this current door that we're looking at is at the hallway, like, right here.
Can the second floor use both staircases?
The second floor could use this staircase from the hallway, and yes, the second floor could also get out from this staircase, correct?
Do we need two staircases in that sense, or like...
Because like, here in the back hallway, because it needs to go to the third floor as well, the third floor only have one way to get out.
There's no fire escape or deck in the back for them to get out as well on the third floor?
There is a deck from here to get out, yes.
So there's like, four ways of getting out right now, right?
For, second floor is three ways.
Three ways, yeah.
Yes, correct.
So if you come in the front door on the left side, if I'm reading this correctly, you could go directly from the front of the building to the backyard through this little slanted door that we're looking at in this picture?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So from the street...
Okay.
On the door on the left, you can go down that hallway and come out this door, into the backyard.
Into, you, into the backyard, you could go from, you don't have to, you cannot get from the backyard from there, no. Because...
So is this door opening to?
It's like, open from here, it could only go to the hallway to the second floor. It doesn't go to the backyard.
If you look at the photograph...
Yeah, because if I'm looking at this door in this picture right here, I see a light on the other end, I'm assuming that's the front door.
That, that, yes, because like, the door is open from here, right? And that picture is taken from here. So basically, it's not from the front door, you could go out from basically the walkway, you could just walk out. But it's not going into the building. So like, that picture is basically taking from here, this direction, from this perspective, and that door is like, right here, so the light is basically here. It's like, it just, you just go up to the building.
I disagree, that doesn't make sense. When you walk through the front door, that same front door...
From the, this one?
Where does the stairs begin?
The stair begin all the way in the back. You have to walk through this hallway.
So it's just an empty hallway?
It's an empty hallway, correct.
So you get to the second hatched area in the back?
Correct.
So isn't that this door here, that you make the turn to go up the stairs?
If you go through the door, right? If you go through the door...
No, I'm talking about from the front. This door looks, this picture, the door seems to be on this angled area. You keep pointing to the side, which isn't possible, because the next door is there, the next building is there. That door is on the angle.
Yes. So that door go into the hallway? It doesn't go to...
Yes, but that hallway goes out the front door, out the street door.
You, you have to go out from this to go to the front.
Right. So why couldn't you walk straight from the street to the backyard from this door?
But you don't need to go through that door, you could just go...
I don't care what you need, I'm saying what is possible. Does this door lead to the backyard?
No, it does not.
So then what are we looking at here?
Which, this...
We're looking at the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, like...
This looks like, like you said, you're standing in the backyard taking a picture of the door that's on the slab.
Okay, so if you are going from the front door here, right? You go from the front door, and then you say, okay, I'm going to get out from here to go to the back, yes, that's possible.
Okay, that's all we're saying. So, and then, so the staircase, you're actually making that slight turn...
Yes.
...to go up the stairs.
Yes.
And underneath the stairs in the dead space is where you have this closet.
Yes.
Okay. This was way too much work to understand something that should have been put on the drawing. I mean, it's unnecessary. So I'm questioning other factors though, but thank you.
Sure.
Are there other questions from members of the board?
I'll go. Just a few, okay? So on the left-hand side's an existing conditions plan, right? There's a window on the left-hand side that's existing.
The window...
At the very top, at the very top of the building, at the top of the page.
Top of the page.
See where you're putting the new door? In the new plan? At the top, in the backyard. You want to walk that...
Oh, right here, this one?
Yeah, you see where that is?
Okay.
If you go over to the existing plan, it's, I believe, a demolition plan, there's a window there.
Yes, there is a window there, correct.
But it's not on a drawing.
Okay.
And so you've then, so then for the new plan, you put a door in where that window is, and you filled in where the door used to be. So if you're going to fill in where the door used to be, it's helpful for you to show new construction there, so we can discern between the demolition and the new construction. We provide a set of demolition plans and a set of new construction plans. This makes it easier for everyone to understand what is being proposed.
Got it.
Okay.
Yes, okay, got it, all right.
And the hatched area on the left that we just went through...
This one?
Yeah, a journey. I completely agree, and I just want to be very clear about the top part of it that's adjacent to the meeting room from number four, the hatched area on the left...
This one?
Lower.
Right here?
Below that is meeting room number four, below. Come down the page.
Okay, this one?
Your eyes are as bad as mine, sorry.
Okay.
That one, right there, that room to the left of it is a hatched area. I just want to be clear, that hatched area has a roof over it, it's only one story high. You're not going to the second floor anywhere from that area. You have to walk further down and go up the stair, I assume, because I'm assuming everything. But I can see from the photographs and from the site and the pictures, that that's only one story high, that top part near the meeting room.
This one?
That, yeah, the hatched area to the left doesn't go up to the second floor, right there at that location. Maybe it does further down the page.
This one does not go to the second floor, but this one does.
I hear you say that, and I'm telling you physically, it's not possible, based on the photographs and based on what I've seen with my own two eyes. Okay?
Okay.
That's why, to go back to the other, the larger point, is if the plans need to be drawn completely and accurately and consistently, so that we have a better chance of understanding what is being proposed.
Okay. So I would like to understand what we need to do next, so we need to update a drawing, correct? Yes, I suppose that's a yes. Or...
Can I ask a question as well?
Yes.
Would it, would it be possible to do a bike, pick a bike, any bike? Amy?
Yep. So would it be better if we include the second and third floor, and including the site, entire site, with the deck from the end, going to give you a better picture of what we are proposing for the entire building?
Doesn't hurt.
What...
I'm not sure, yeah.
You could be entirely footprint.
Well, Ms. Harris, why don't you go?
I was going to say, I'm not sure if it's required for you to show detailed plans of the second and third floors. We just need to know what's happening on the first floor, including the deck and the backyard. So I would show a site plan with the build, this first floor plan on it with all the hatched areas...
Okay.
Staircases and everything shown.
Yeah, I think the staircases going to the upper floors...
Right.
...are key to show exactly where they start, how they relate to what else is on the first floor is what we need to know.
We will elevation help as well. Elevation of the sidewall, because we have difficulty, that definitely have different opinion about the hatch area. We think it's a first, only have one floor height, but if we measure that, that's going to help, help the decision-making, right?
You know, we don't need detailed plans of the second and third floors.
Okay, got it.
We just need to know, and have the stairs going to a location where that part of the building is that tall.
Yeah. And if you could figure out, because what you have it drawn here, it's hard to believe that on the left side, the hatched area that wedges, it's hard to believe that there's a staircase that fits in there that goes to the second floor.
Yep.
So if you can show that, that would be really helpful.
Sure.
And show kind of how it overlaps the first floor.
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you.
I think, as much as we enjoy your coming here, and I'm sure you enjoy coming here as well, I think maybe if we have Mr. Stimmel testify, just if there are issues related to his...
Yeah.
We can get everything all addressed when the next time you come.
Yeah, I was going to suggest the same thing, Mr. Chair, even though I know we're going to be coming back with revised plans, I think we can get Mr. Stimmel's testimony done.
So two-bedroom, two-bedroom, two-bathroom is good, right? So like, do we need to do any revision on the bedrooms?
Just the number, with the number of bedrooms, we just care that you can actually make it code compliant. You know, windows, if possible, if you're going to invest in a sprinkler system, that's fine, but that will be a condition of approval if we do require, if we do allow you to proceed that way. So I would just think through if that's something that you're actually going to pursue, a full building sprinkler system as opposed to...
Yes, sprinkler system, actually, like, that was working on for a long time already. But for the particular, if it's like, like, a two-bedroom, like, what we propose right now, so basically, like, this bedroom, like, will have like, a window on it, and then this bedroom, there will also be like, a door going out to it, and there's also a window right here as well.
But there won't be a door going out.
There won't be a door going out from that, correct? The door will be here.
Right, okay.
So two-bedroom is good, right?
It's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call Mr. Stimmel, Bill Stimmel.
Mr. Stimmel, you testified at the prior hearing, correct?
No. I don't know if I was sworn or not. No.
Here, okay, well, where are you in then? Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
William Stimmel, S-T-I-M-M-E-L. My professional address is PO Box 280, Rutherford, New Jersey.
William Stimmel, S-T-I-M-M-E-L. My professional address is PO Box 280, Rutherford.
Mr. Chairman, I'm offering Mr. Stimmel both as a professional engineer and professional planner, if you accept his qualifications based upon his...
Yes, we've had him many times.
Prior testimony, thank you. Mr. Stimmel, before we talk about the site plan and the variances, would you address the issue regarding the survey that came up at the last meeting, potentially incorrect survey, and what was done since the last meeting?
Yes. I just brought up on the screen the site plan which was submitted for the board's consideration. This has a revision date, or date, rather, of September 18, '24. It has not been revised since the prior hearing. It shows the outline of the building and the footprint of the building as shown on the site plan is somewhat irregular. There's a jut-in as you travel back from the street frontage on both sides of the property, but they don't match on the left side and the right side. When looking at the site plan in comparison to the photos that were included in the board planner's review letter, some of the board members raised the issue that there may be an inaccuracy or inconsistency with the survey and then the site plan. But as I think the board has now realized, that projection on the south face of the building extends further on the first floor than it does on the second floor. And when you look at that photo in the board planner's letter, and you look at the aerial photographs on Google or whatever source you choose, it appears to be symmetrical that the jut-in on both sides of the building is roughly opposite each other. But the survey is in fact correct, does show the outline of the building at the ground floor, and then the second floor, that southern projection cuts in a little bit sooner.
But that's a one-story extension.
Just one story.
That was probably used for some sort of egress at the time, so the survey could have shown a one-story, then we would have understood it.
Yeah, they could have shown that with a dash line or something to that effect.
But the building's made with those 45s to be the same. But the building's made with those forty-fives to be the same?
Correct, yeah, as you get to the upper floors. Um, the, the photograph that was submitted, uh, I believe it's Exhibit A2, uh, was taken by me for, for the sake of the record on September sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four. So if the board had any additional-
What was the day, I'm sorry, September sixteenth, or?
September sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four. Uh, if the board had any additional questions about the photo, I could try to answer those as well.
Alright, um, Mr. Stimmel, you want to, um, start, I guess, by discussing the existing conditions of the property, then talk about what the applicant is proposing and go into the site plan, which in this case is fairly, you know, minor, given the, uh, the type of the building occupies the bulk of the property.
Yes, the subject property is currently occupied by a three-story structure. Right now, the way the site is approved for use is with a ground floor office and then three residential units split between the second and third floors. Building occupies the full width of the property where it abuts the Orange Road right-of-way. The only access to the rear yard is through the building. As it's presently laid out, there is no curb cut, no driveway, no possibility really of a driveway, because again, that building occupies the full width of the lot at the frontage. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing ground floor office space to a two-bedroom apartment. It had previously been a, a three-bedroom apartment, the architectural plans have of course been revised. Uh, there's no changes right now proposed to the footprint of the existing building. There's no expansion of the building within that existing footprint. There's no increase in height proposed. And again, no site driveway or parking areas proposed due to limitations of the property itself.
Do you want to talk about the, um, the site plan that you prepared?
Yeah, the-
Specifically, the, you know, what you're proposing in terms of, you know, improvements to the site in the front and the rear?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna refer to the paper copy for my own behalf. With the projectors, some of the existing conditions underlying the drawing are a little bit washed out on the screen. But the, uh, site plan consists of two areas. The general information, the zoning map, the tax map, and the zoning table are shown on the left side of the sheet. And the existing conditions are grayed out underneath the proposed conditions on the subject property. Um, a- as far as modification to the site, there's really very little proposed at this time. Uh, there were some comments from the board planner about providing a landscape strip and a street tree in front of the building in an earlier version of the review letter. And we have agreed to that modification. Uh, the plan shows that the rear yard is to have the existing gravel and overgrowth removed and be topsoiled and seeded. Uh, the applicant in the interim has spoken to a landscape contractor, and the contractor has recommended putting down sod in that area, so that would be a minor change to the plan. There's no existing trees in the rear yard, there's no proposed trees in the rear yard. Um, in terms of the zoning table, the site does have a number of existing non-conformities associated with it, which are not being impacted, such as the lot area, uh, sorry, excuse me. The, uh, building height, two and a half stories is permitted, three is existing and proposed. The front yard, twenty-five feet is required, one point three-two feet is existing and proposed. The side yard to one side, six feet is required, zero existing and proposed. To the other side yard, ten feet is required, point two-four feet existing and proposed. Maximum principal structure width is allowed to be sixty-five percent of the lot width, which works out to be twenty-nine point six feet, uh, nineteen point five feet, rather. Uh, we're at twenty-nine point six feet existing and proposed, so that's a non-conformity. And then building coverage where twenty-five percent is permitted, we're at sixty point three percent. And impervious coverage, sixty, uh, fifty-five percent is permitted, sixty-nine point nine percent is existing and proposed. And then also, based on the use of the existing building and the calculations for parking contained in the municipal ordinance, as well as in the residential site improvement standards, the existing parking requirement is twelve point one. Uh, with the proposed modification, it would be, uh, seven point nine parking spaces. So that table would be updated based on the change from a three-bedroom unit on the ground floor to a two-bedroom unit. Uh, so there is an existing non-conformity when it comes to the parking requirement, which is being reduced as a result of the proposed development.
Okay, um, before you go into the variances and planning testimony, with respect to the rear yard, again, the applicant's prepared to put sod down and create a nice grass area there. How is that going to be maintained, specifically, you know, how, how do you get equipment back there? Where is the equipment to be stored? I'm talking, I assume you're talking about a relatively small lawnmower for a limited area, is that right?
Small area, small lawnmower. We were envisioning either one of the old-fashioned reel mowers where you provide the power, or an electric mower where you plug it in and it would be stored either underneath the overhang for the second floor deck, or possibly in a, a small, something akin to a yard box or one of those plastic sheds, uh, in, in the rear area.
Okay. Is there anything else you need to talk about regarding the site plan? Are you ready to now provide planning testimony with regard to the variances?
That is it as far as the site plan.
Okay. So can you provide your analysis of the, uh, just identify the, the two variances that are required, and then provide your, uh, analysis and professional opinion regarding those variances?
Yes, the, uh, the site is located in the R2 zone in the township of Montclair. Uh, the R2 zone is the two-family zone, permitted principal uses in that zone. According to Section three forty-seven dash forty-seven of the municipal ordinance, are one-family dwelling, detached dwellings, two-family detached dwellings, and municipal facilities subject to site plan review by the planning board. So the existing use of the site, the office with the apartments upstairs is not a permitted use. The proposed multifamily is still not a permitted use, although you're eliminating that existing non-conforming office aspect of the use on the property. Uh, in terms of the existing development pattern in the area, the properties all along the southbound side of Orange Road are located in the R2 zone in the vicinity of the site, and the development pattern is consistent with that zoning. The properties on the northbound side of Orange Road, across the street from us, are in the RA, the redevelopment area zone, and those in Bloomfield, on Bloomfield Avenue to the north of the site are in the C1 central business zone. And again, the development patterns in those areas are generally consistent with the requirements of the zone. There was some discussion at the last meeting as to whether the site would require a D1 variance for a new non-conforming use, or a D2 variance for an expansion of an existing non-conforming use. It wasn't immediately clear how the site came to be a office on the ground floor with apartments on the second and third floor, because the applicant had indicated that that transpired since she bought the property. For that reason, we felt the best approach would be to make the argument for the D1 variance for the new non-conforming use in the zone. Um, in order to justify that requested variance relief, the applicant has to show that the positive and negative criteria have been satisfied. Uh, in this case, the positive criteria being the special reasons that the variance relief can be granted for reasons applicable to this subject property. The first element of that is the site suitability, a demonstration that the site is particularly suited to the proposed development, um, for reasons which aren't applicable to the adjoining parcels. And I, I think the key thing here is that you've got this large existing building compared to the other properties in the neighborhood. Uh, it already houses multifamily housing. It's got that existing non-conforming office use. It can accommodate the unit, subject to working out some of the finer points of the, the architectural plan, of course. It can accommodate that additional unit without an expansion of the footprint. Uh, the second part of the positive criteria is the special reasons that the project must show it advances the purposes of zoning. The first and most commonly cited purpose of zoning is Purpose A from the Municipal Land Use Law, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. So in addition to providing a new housing unit, we are maintaining and improving upon an existing residential property. We're eliminating that non-conforming office use from the zone, and eliminating at the same time a second principal use from the subject property. The other side of the coin, the negative criteria, the applicant must demonstrate that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Based on my review of the application materials, the plans that have been submitted, comments from the board planner, visit to the site as well, I see no substantial detriment to the public good based on the conversion of that ground floor office to an additional apartment unit. There's no, or very limited, changes to the exterior of the building. If the application is ultimately denied, that interior space just reverts back to being an office use in the residential neighborhood. There's no impact to traffic. A single apartment unit generates a fractional trip to the roadway network during the busiest times of day. There's a reduction of the required parking as compared to the existing office use. And then finally, the applicant has taken into consideration a lot of the comments from the board and the board planner which were presented at the earlier hearing and through the review letters, and revised the plan to address at least some of those comments at this point. Uh, the scope of the project has been reduced to change the ground floor, floor unit from a three-bedroom to a two-bedroom apartment. They eliminated the front bedroom, because there were concerns about privacy for people living in that bedroom, with the unit being at ground level and the windows right behind the sidewalk. Uh, the rear exit was adjusted so that it didn't pass through the rear bedroom at that location. So those are all significant changes made, uh, based on input from the board and the board professionals. And then the proposed use is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. What you have here is a non-conforming use, which although it would be non-conforming, again, if it were to be approved, it brings it more in compliance with the requirements of the zone. You eliminate that office and make it solely residential use on the property. So although non-conforming, it is more conforming. Um, and that also addresses the issue with the enhanced quality of proof because of the fact that we're asking for a D1 variance at this location. Uh, the applicant has to address the omission of the proposed use from those permitted in the zone. And again, this is an existing use on the subject property. The existing three-family is going to a four-family, and you're eliminating the office component of that. Uh, that's the D variance associated with the application. The C variances, again, primarily are existing non-conformities which are not being impacted. The building height, the front yard setback, the side yard setback on one side, and then the other side. The maximum width of the principal structure and the maximum building coverage, uh, all existing non-conformities which are not being impacted by the development. The issue of parking was raised in the board planner's letter. I went through the calculation on the plan. Uh, it's twelve point one spaces is the existing requirement. Seven point nine would be the proposed requirement based on a two-bedroom unit on the ground floor. So although that parking deficiency is being maintained, the extent of the non-conformity is being reduced. Um, and the, the C variances, to the extent that they're applicable, would come under the board's consideration of the use, whether the use in this location, in this building, is appropriate for the zone. And the consideration of those C variances would be included with the consideration of the use.
Okay, no further questions?
Mr. Chair, do you have any questions?
Uh, you, you were talking about the, uh, development of the rear yard. And, uh, your discussion with the landscape architect was it would best be served by putting sod back there. Is that correct? Am I correct?
The, the client had spoken to a landscape contractor, and the landscape contractor felt the better way to put grass in the yard would be to put down sod rather than topsoil and seed.
Okay, my question is this, sod requires about two and a half, three inches of dirt to catch. Unless there is that already, how's he, how do you propose to transport dirt back there?
Fair question, I am not the landscape contractor, but I could get you an answer on that, because we, uh, apparently will be back for another hearing.
Okay. The other thing I have is, um, the parking issue. There is no place to park for this building, to my viewpoint. The only place to park is across the street. Is that, that's correct, right?
Correct, there's no, there's no driveway, there's no parking.
There's a deck over there, and there's street parking.
Correct, yes.
And has that, is that what you're calculating as the parking? And is it usable? Can you use that deck? And can you use those spaces over there? Because they're not part of this application. The, the, uh, strike, just a minute. The, uh, Board of Education has access to that deck. And I don't know how much public parking is in there.
The, the site doesn't allow for parking, there's only, there's zero feet on one side of the building and point two-four feet on the other side of the building.
Right.
The building's right on the front property line, so there's nowhere to park in front or no way to run a driveway alongside the building.
Okay, so accommodations have to be made with that deck?
Right, the, I, I believe, and Mr. Trembulaq will tell me if I'm remembering incorrectly, but I believe the client had indicated at the last meeting that there is parking available, that that's where she parked when using the office at that location, because that was her office.
Okay, but that's office use, that's an eight-to-five use of a deck. If you had, give, turn this into an apartment, that's overnight parking.
Correct.
Is there accommodations for overnight parking?
Three of the units on the property are existing, and they're, they're parking somewhere if they have cars. Obviously, you-
Pay for it.
There's, there's somewhat of a self-regulation with this. If you, if you go to an apartment complex and you rent an apartment, and the apartment manager says there's two spaces available to you, that's gonna be reflected in the rent, you're gonna get people that are more likely to have two cars. There's many apartments in Montclair and other municipalities around here where you've got existing apartments that don't have parking. Save some money on that rent, and the people either don't have cars or, or find someplace they can park. You know, it's an existing condition in this building that's being maintained. We're making the argument that we're reducing the parking requirement, because the second and third floor is the same. There's less parking demand for the residential on the ground floor than there is for the office, with the understanding that nobody at the office probably is gonna be parked there from eight o'clock at night until eight o'clock in the morning, roughly speaking. Uh, so in the event that the people that move into that unit would need parking, they would have to make an arrangement. I would imagine that would be with the parking deck across the street. But again, that would be a second point we could track down for the, uh, for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Caulfield?
Uh, Mr. Stimmel, the backyard looks like it was gravelled, is that your understanding when you were back there?
Yes.
Okay, so they, they just had like kind of a gravel yard for that, is that?
Uh, there, there was gravel with some sort of a weed barrier fabric, which had been put down to minimize the-
The grow.
Need for maintenance. Obviously, it, that only lasts so long, so it, it needs a cleanup.
Gotcha. Uh, we haven't decided the tree in the front, have you, at all?
We would obviously stipulate we'd take something from the approved plant list. If the board has a preference, we're open to anything you'd suggest.
Thanks, uh, no, that's perfect, thank you.
Ms. Harris?
I actually have a question of the owner. That's okay. How, uh, how do you manage trash right now for the tenants upstairs?
You can, you can sit down.
Um, so, on the left side of the building, if I, directly facing it, um, there's the hallway that go up to the second, third floor, right? The trash can is over there.
It's in the hallway, you keep it in the hallway?
Outside of the hallway.
On the sidewalk, or in?
So like where you see the window before? Yes, yes. So like where you saw the window and the door before, the trash can is like right next to that.
But is it outside of the building or inside of the building?
Outside of the building. Outside of the building.
And then on days that you have to take the trash out, do the tenants...
So that's why I was pointing it. They could just like take it out through...
It's the tenant's responsibility to do that?
Correct.
Okay, and then how will, how will the first floor tenant do that since they don't have access to that hallway?
Um, so they have access to the backyard. So the backyard, they could go through that to go to the front.
So they'll keep it in the back and bring it through the apartment to take it out?
It doesn't need to go through the apartment. So like they could leave the trash that's in, outside, like where you walk through...
Oh, where the door is?
Right, right, right. And then like, because you could pull that, like you don't have to go through anything. That's just outside. So you could just pull that going up to the front.
And then when it's time to bring it out to the curb, the tenant would do that themselves?
Correct.
Through that hallway?
Through the outside hallway, yes.
Okay. Yeah, if we can see that on the plan, on the site plan, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's outside the building. Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Grant.
I just had a few comments about the floor plan. So I would, when you were, we were discussing not showing the stairs, I would suggest a section, a section through here, going to the back of the building. Also, I think an elevation of the back, just suggesting. And there, I just, I just noticed because I was going to write the section based on the direction, but I don't think there's a north arrow. And also, if the stairs are added, indicate the direction of the stairs. I don't know if there's a basement, but this, the stairs that is existing here don't have, show direction. So then if there's more stairs, then the direction, you know, would be helpful. And then that, that's everything.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I noticed that the neighboring properties have elevated porches. So does this office space ever have any, since it's at a lower grade, do you ever encounter any flooding issues or drainage issues? And what have you taken into consideration, since this would be a living space, to potentially upgrade and/or modify your drainage? Also, just from looking from the backyard as well, it's, the backyard is elevated and then it kind of drops down a little bit. So I would think that water could potentially flow in that direction, so...
So the building was purchased in May 2016. We went through like a very heavy rainstorm in September 2021, I believe. And we have no issue of water whatsoever from, actually, yes, you could see a elevated like porch that's like right next to us. However, if you look at the other side of the, of the other building, it's not elevated either. So it depends on which building that you're looking at. If you're looking at like the side that's going to the, to the, yeah, on that side with the hallway is, yes, you see that. But if you look at the other side, the right-hand side of that building, it's not elevated. And also, like going up to the first floor, you have to go through one step. So it's actually elevated a little bit. So, but in my experience, like we are there for almost nine years at this point, there's never ever water. And there is a basement, but the basement, no unit can go through the basement directly. It has to go through the outside again. So you can't get through the basement through the first unit. It has to go through outside where the deck was before. And there is drainage down there. I forget, French drainage, I forgot what it's called.
French drainage, right?
Yeah.
Where the sides are...
Yep.
So there's a space in the basement.
Yep, yep. So, so far, I never ever experienced any water issue in there.
Neither in the basement, no mush?
Um, basement, I...
Flooding?
No.
Was there a sub-pump?
There's, yeah, some pump, yes. Some pump, yes.
Does it turn that on?
It's working. But I, I don't see any, I, I never claim any insurance on water anyway. So there's no water issue in that building. Yeah.
And where does it pump out to, the sub-pump?
Um, that's beyond my knowledge. But, um, yeah, I, I never have any water issue. Even like sometimes at the first two year when it's really heavy storm, I'll go there. Nothing.
It, does it run out to the side or the back where...
Again, I'm not engineering that. I, I don't know. Yeah, but just like from what I can see, there's just no water.
Mr. Simon.
Just a quick question for the architect. You're proposing to move the rear door. From the rear elevation, you can see a cutout for a doorway that looked like it was boarded up. Are you proposing to open that up or are you going to make a, move it over to where the window?
It's replacing the location of the window.
Of the window?
Yeah.
So what is that boarded up doorway? It seems to be back to that shaded area again. So we don't know what's, at least it looks to be leading to that shaded area, which is not detailed here. Why not just open that door up since it is already a pathway cut out for it?
Because you have banger space to go through it.
Excuse me?
You have to bend your, your body.
Oh, the height is...
Yeah, the height.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith.
I'm surprised that here there's a basement and I don't know how to get to the basement. I hear that you could only get to it from the outside. I don't know how.
So this picture right here, that's where we go to the basement?
Yes.
Yep.
Let me see.
There's a stair right there, yeah.
So this is the stair that's the back, right, going to? And then like there is a door, I guess, like right here?
So, good. You're pointing to figure seven in the planning department memo, did you say where he's seven?
The white door next to this?
Not the white door. The white door go back to the...
Apartment.
Apartment. It's on this side where the stair going to the deck behind that is another door. It's just not shown in the picture.
What page is it on? Six?
Uh, page six, correct.
Page six. By the stair that goes...
Behind the stairs.
Upstairs, sort of.
Yeah.
But it's in that location.
Yes, correct.
There's a slightly more zoomed in picture on the next page, figure eight.
And where does this door that looks like it's been grayed out, painted gray, where does that go to?
That gray door is where with the hashtag that's talking about, why don't we open that up? It's just like where it go up to the stairs. So that's why it's very low barrelage when you go a little bit into the building.
To which stair?
Second floor.
Oh. And they have another exit that they can go out of, but this one is...
This one is sealed off, yes. Currently is sealed off. They can't, the second floor cannot realistically access here because blocked by the stairs.
Hmm. It's an interesting space.
Oh, wow, yeah. I learned my lesson.
I've got to run through a number of things quickly, okay?
Okay.
I think it would behoove you to have a site plan that shows what the finish intention is, the sod, if there's more soil being brought in for the sod, where isn't the extent of it, and showing a pathway, since we do understand that there is a door here from the backyard that leads to the front yard, it would be good to show that pathway clear as opposed to obstruct it. The egress windows in the two bedrooms that you have, the egress windows have a requirement that the sill's not very high. I forget if it's 24 inches or 30 inches, but it's a lot higher than the windows I see facing the street. So you should be aware and understand that that's probably going to require those windows to be enlarged. And I don't know if there'll be other people that care about the change in the out front elevation of the building, but I do think that would be an impact in the design. I ask you to check with your architect on that.
The intention is to not do egress windows.
Sorry?
The intention is to sprinkle the building and not...
Mr. Griffith was talking about the existing windows on the front of the building.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. The ones facing the street, those two, I don't know about the other ones. They may require it as well, but it's not as important as the one facing the street. I think that, that that will be a public concern, what it looks like. I think you will want to care about what it looks like in cost. As I said before, the existing window and then your existing condition plan should be shown, infill of a doorway that you're, that you're tearing out and infilling with the temp, with new construction should be shown so we can understand the scope of the work being proposed, both existing conditions and demolition and new construction. The back deck and stairs should be shown. The compressors that are sitting in the, in the back deck and stairs should be shown in the existing and in the new construction because they're not going to go away and you'll want to place them so that they're not in the way. It's an important thing. The closets underneath the stairs need to be shown. There are traditional ways of showing stairs with, with closets underneath them. Architectural graphic standards can show a lot of different ways of doing it. Generally, the stair is cut off after it goes up about three feet with a slash line and a break in it, and then you show the closet underneath with the door. I'm just looking to be able to see the plans and understand what you have and what you are proposing. That's it, thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? For the back door, right? What if we don't remove that door and we just make the window bigger on that one?
I don't understand.
Which back?
The back, the door that's leading to the backyard. So we would just have the existing door. We're just going to make that window a little bit bigger.
You're saying, you're going to put a window there?
I'm sorry?
You're going to put a window there instead of a door?
I mean, there is a window currently, right?
But you're, you're moving the door to where the window...
What if I don't move the door?
Well, remember, we talked about not having your hallway go through the bedroom, not having your exterior access go through your bedroom.
Okay.
That's why it was going to the window.
Okay.
I'd also recommend lighting in that area and maybe an air, a designated spot where you'll put trash that's enclosed, trash and enclosure, potentially, something small, just because it seems pretty open. And if residents are going to potentially live here, they may be utilizing that space more than often.
Which space?
Backyard.
The back, but the garbage can is on the other side, it's not in the backyard.
Okay, well...
I mean, that's construction from like a long time ago.
We should remove that.
But this is what we see. So in terms of the backyard, I would say there should possibly be some lighting back there since more people would inhabit this, would live in the space. And wherever you do put your, the garbage, I mean, from what, from what I heard, it didn't make the most, it wasn't, didn't make the most sense in terms of like the efficiency of, yeah, how to enclose it, right? So we have, you know, raccoons, we have all types of things, right? And we don't necessarily want...
Enclose what? Enclose the backyard or enclose...
No, so, so in some of our plans, when applicants come in front of us, right, we'll, and when they're, where they have garbage and they'll, there'll be multi-families, units will let them know that they should put their trash in an enclosed area. So I am suggesting you look into that and see what may work best with your plan. Because it sounded like, you know, the trash is on, and on the outside of the unit, but in the stairwell, I'm not...
It's not on the stairwell. It's like, it doesn't go to the stair. I'm just describing it as, it's next to the outside building where the hallway...
So, but it's still inside in the hallway?
No, it's not. It's outside.
If you could show a site plan and show us where...
It's like right here.
Yeah, I just want to see it.
Right, the area.
Yeah, we just want to see it on the site plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. I would still enclose that though.
Okay, if it's thus enclosed, then like basically they cannot walk from the backyard to the front.
Okay.
We're closing that out.
Mr. Stimmel is going to revise the plans to show where the trash containers are located and then we'll go from there as to what we want done with that or if that's an acceptable area. But at this point, I don't think any of us fully understand what is happening with the trash and how it's getting to the street. And if it's shown on the site plan, that will facilitate the discussion. We may say move it, but I think the starting point is to show where it is and understand that in relationship to the changes you're making to the architectural plans. Ms. Grant.
I don't know. But when I suggested an elevation of the back with the existing, the existing proposal, I would do all three floors and also just indicate where the original wall is.
Mr. Stimmel, I'm going to actually ask you questions. First is a comment, you know, you, I, I'm not going to do a condition, but I would recommend that you explore a slow-growing drought-tolerant grass to be planted in the backyards to minimize the number of times the lawn has to be cut and its survivability back there. It's, you know, just, I think that'd be better. I don't know, you know, you're, you know, I think since you're going to revise the plan to, you know, obviously replace the seating with the, with the sod, I think, you know, you should leave the note about removing the gravel and I would just put topsoil is necessary. I don't know what's under the gravel. There may be enough topsoil there for the sod, it may not be, but just, you just put topsoil is necessary. On the planning, the applicant testified last time that she had converted the second floor from office space to an apartment. And I asked, well, how did that happen without a variance? And Mr. Tremblak indicated he was puzzled by that too. I'm assuming since you didn't say anything, you did not look into that?
I thought there had been conversations, not from me, with the municipality as to how that happened. I have no firsthand knowledge. I'm assuming it was an oversight.
I, Mr. Tremblak?
All I can say, Mr. Chair, I did speak with Richard Sherwin today about that issue because you and I both had the same curiosity, I guess. And he wasn't sure. He was going to go back and look. I don't know if he spoke to you...
Yeah, so I believe that happened in 2018 and from what he told me, it was a determination made with the planning department to exempt that from a variance review because it was a existing, nonconforming, mixed-use building that was going to remain a mixed-use building and it was reducing the level of nonconformity. That's all I know, was any of it.
Then the same logic would apply to this application as well. It's doing the exact same thing. I don't know of a theory under the municipal ad use law that that works either for the third unit or the fourth unit. Save a lot of applicants, a lot of effort, but I, I don't know. I'm not sure what I want to do with that. I have a problem with our sanctioning something that was done improperly, or maybe we should formally sanction something that was done improperly. I, I don't really, knowing the fun we're having with the first floor, I don't really want to go into the second floor and do that. But I, I don't know. And I'll, I don't know if Mr. Sullivan has any thoughts.
I agree about not going in the second floor. I mean, the municipality's acted on this. I mean, there's estoppel issues and everything else, so I would say stay away from it.
Yeah, I mean, permits were applied for, maybe they shouldn't have been issued or signed off on, but I mean, certainly the applicant didn't do anything wrong.
No, I, I understand, I...
I wasn't sure who you were talking about sanctioning, so...
Not, not the applicant.
I went through every single, like, and then they're like, okay, do it. And I get my CO and everything. If someone tell me not to do it... If someone tell me not to do it, then I wouldn't have.
I understand. I'm just puzzled by why, how it was determined that you didn't need to come here. Be one thing if you went from one commercial use to another commercial use, that's one thing.
I applied that in 2022. If they say the variance like changed or the regulation changed in 2018, that's prior to my time, too.
This has been in R2 zone for a very long time. We've had other applications on the other units on the block and, okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
When do you think you'll be back?
I would ask if the board would carry this to your second meeting in February. I think that would give us enough time to get plans prepared.
That's the 19th?
Yes.
You'll consent to an extension of time for the board to act until that date?
Yes, we consent.
So this matter is being carried until our February 19th meeting. There'll be no further notice of the application. So if you're hiding behind the chairs and are interested in the application, come here on February 19th for hopefully the final episode in the trilogy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next application is out of BDP 6-10 Erie LLC. This is a property located at 6-10 Erie Street. It's an application for the Board of Adjustment for amended site plan approval. To amend the plan we approved in April of 2024 to construct a sunken stone patio and masonry wall with a planter with additional drainage improvements. The property is designated as Block 3307, Lot 7 on the township tax maps, and is located in C2 general business and light manufacturing zone. Our taxes in order and is, taxes paid in the notice in order?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tremblek.
Good evening again, Alan Tremblek, appearing on behalf of BDP 6-10 Erie LLC. This involves the property near the Walnut Street train station where the Richie Sisiri restaurant used to be, and thankfully, there's a new restaurant that's finally opened at that location. The board will recall, or most of the current members of the board were on the board last year when this, we presented an application for site plan approval for this property, which involved a variety of exterior improvements and renovations. And also, you'll recall, at that time, the board granted a use variance to permit a portion of one of the buildings to be occupied by Sharon Miller's Academy for the Performing Arts. That approval was memorialized about nine months ago in April. We're here because there are some very minor renovate, changes to the approved site plan, which affect a patio area, which we'll discuss. There are some drainage improvements, I believe, that go along with that, but it's a very limited area that we're focusing on. There are no variances that are triggered by what's being proposed. I would finally note that the application was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission in November, and the commission determined that the patio that's being proposed was a visual improvement from what was originally proposed. So having said that, I have Nate Burns as my witness to testify regarding the plan revisions. We could have him sworn.
Mr. Burns, did you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
Sure. Nate Burns. For the purpose of this application, my address is 7 Oak Place.
Moncler?
Moncler.
Nate, can you give the board some background regarding your education and professional qualifications briefly?
Sure. I'm a landscape architect, not registered or licensed in New Jersey, but in 12 other states. I'm currently the Senior Vice President of Development for BDP Holdings. Prior to my position at BDP Holdings, I was an associate and project manager at Langen Engineering, where I worked for 20 years and did all of BDP, all of BDP's work with Langen. I have a background in undergraduate degree in landscape architecture and a master's degree in planning.
And were you, the original site plan that was approved last year was prepared by Langen?
Yes, it was prepared under, under my advisement.
Okay, you were with Langen at the time?
Yes.
Okay. And the revised plans that are before the board this evening were, were prepared by Langen as well, correct?
Yes, they were prepared by Langen.
And were you involved in the preparation or was that done under your supervision or your direction?
It was done at my direction as being Langen's client in this instance.
Okay, all right. So are you able then to review the proposed revisions to the plan that we're seeking the board's approval for this evening?
How's that? Okay. If you recall, the original plan proposed, excuse me? This is CG 101. The original plan proposed restriping to the parking lot and some limited changes along the facades of, you know, what is now Sharon Miller Dance Studio and the gym. In this north, northern corner here of the building, in the existing condition, because the building was kind of an agglomeration of additions and such, there was kind of some oddness, is the best way to describe it, where the floor elevations were a little bit different, and there was also some drainage issues because the site generally drains towards that corner. Under the, the plan that this board previously approved, the area now shown as a sunken patio was just approved to be a concrete, a new concrete pad to level out the ground with steps either up or down into the adjacent tenants. Because of the drainage issues and the desire to make those access points fully ADA accessible, we decided to take the whole area out, rework the drainage, and create ADA accessible walkways down into those couple of tenants. So in doing so, we're dropping the whole patio area to form a level sunken patio, adding in a sloped walkway along the facade of Fitloft and a sloped walkway along the face of what will now be Sharon Miller. Both of those walkways are under 5%, so we're not required to have railings. We didn't want the visual impacts of a railing. We're not removing any parking. We have a low brick wall that will match our facade ultimately. It'll be a painted brick that will match the color of the facade. And then in addition to that, there was the roof leaders of the entire, or the majority of the building either exited out here onto Erie or went under the building out to Tony's Brook, and we looked at rerouting those. The drainage where those roof leaders went into on Erie, as part of our previous approval, we videoed all the storm sores, and the drainage that previously went out here to Erie was clogged and it was indeterminate where it was, where it was actually, you know, going to. So we, we worked with Langen and worked with the township engineer to reroute the storm drainage, maintaining a limited amount of drainage under the building, but really rerouting the rest of the drainage out to this existing storm inlet in Erie Street, which goes down Erie to Label and then discharges into Tony's Brook.
So the only revisions are what you just described with the drainage?
Exactly.
And then the patio is in the same location, but it's now just being sunken?
Exactly, exactly.
And then there's going to be a painted brick wall surrounding the patio, or at least on the two sides?
Yes, yes, a painted brick wall. And ultimately, this corner here is the location of Blue Coffee, our new tenant who's moved in there, and they'll be using some of this patio area here as just, you know, outdoor cafe seating for people who come and get coffee and are, you know, waiting to go to the gym or whatever else they may be doing.
And what's the, the height of the proposed wall? That won't close the sunken.
On, on the outside, the proposed wall is, I have to double check. So I don't want to tell you the wrong thing. The architectural, thank you. The next tab, I got you. If you go to the architectural drawings, A101, you can see the height of the proposed wall, and I can't read it on that screen.
It looks like two feet, three inches.
Yes, it's two feet, three inches on the front, and then, I'll look at my, my computer so I can read that. And then approximately 42 inches on the backside.
Is there any increase in impervious coverage?
No.
Another thing from this? Okay. Are there any variances, to your knowledge, that are triggered by these plan revisions?
No.
And except for the, what you just discussed, there's no other changes to the site plan that was approved by this board last year?
Nope.
One final question. There was a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission about perhaps adding landscaping around the planter wall. Did you take a look at that? Can you just respond to that? Again, it's a suggestion or a recommendation?
Sure. We, we did evaluate the ability to add landscaping around the planter wall, but due to the proximity of the adjacent parking, we're unable to fit landscaping between the wall and the parking spaces. And really, it's our, it's our opinion in this case that cars will be parked in those parking spaces, so you won't really see the wall anyway because of the cars that are parked there, and it'll be a general improvement as it is. You know, we are providing some additional landscaping along the building, I think, as this, this board previously required.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Caulfield?
The cafeteria or the restaurant that you have there, they have tables or things on the sidewalk that's in there. If you put this new patio in with these new tables, would they get rid of those tables on that sidewalk?
The coffee shop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there will be no tables on that sidewalk? You know what I'm saying, that, that curb, I'm saying, is that what you're looking at?
That's, that's the intent.
If I wanted, if I was in a wheelchair today, could I, is there a curb to get into that right now, or is it just all the same level now?
No, it's not currently accessible today. Because there, to, if, to get into what was previously the, the Fitloft entry, there's a, there's a lip, and because of the drainage issues that were there, the door on the coffee shop was actually built up at the threshold, so someone had come and, you know, built a little hump at the threshold, and if you look at the door, it's actually a little bit short, and we're removing all that to make it fully accessible.
Okay. The reason why you're sinking that patio area is it just, just is the reason why?
Yeah, sure. Because the, the elevation of the building there is actually lower.
Lower, okay.
Yeah.
It's just, I see that you have drainage or catch basin at the corner of that new, that new patio that you presented. There's, there's nothing, there's no catch basins at overall in that patio area or would it all drain out? Because it looks like there's a wall on that, like.
We're proposing a small, a small inlet, and then let me get back to that. If you look at. I think it's four pages. There's an existing inlet there in the corner. There's a number of existing inlets there, some of, many of which we're removing. But there's an existing inlet there in the, in the very corner of the building that's going to remain. We're going to, we're going to re, reset the top of it and clean it up so it looks much nicer.
And it looks like all the leaders are piped out, like through a pipe, kind of out to the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Ms. Harris?
This section that you have on your architectural plan here, the wall is actually labeled as a planter, and I'm wondering if there's any way to put plants on, along that wall, just because in that section, looks like, you know, I can open my door out of my car and fall over into your patio. Is there?
The, the, the wall is actually two feet, when I say two feet, three inches high?
Right.
Yeah.
And the width of it is, is one foot, four inches, so there's not room within the body of the wall to fit a space that's meaningful enough to grow plant material.
Could you put a railing along that wall? Adjacent to the parking?
We're not required by code to do so. Our goal is to not, to provide as, as limited visual impact to, you know, for people coming in so that they can see the retail establishments that are beyond the wall. Because if we put, if the, the bottom of the, the bottom, the, the wall is 42 inches high.
From the patio elevation?
From, from the patio elevation, which is also the elevation of the doors into those retail establishments. So the first, you know, three and a half feet of those retail establishments is, is obstructed by the wall, further obstructed by the adjacent cars, and we just would like to avoid doing anything that, you know, further obstructs them.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Grant?
The inlet that you said you were going to reset, is it shown on here?
Yeah, it says, it's on, I believe it's sheet four of the PDF. No, I'm sorry, it's sheet three of the PDF, and it's, it's listed as two-by-two inlet to remain. This is sheet CS 101.
Okay, that was my only question, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
So mine is more so like of a comment, but I'm referring back to the Moncler Historic Preservation Commission, their recommendation number three.
Mr. Moore, I can't hear you, which.
Oh, you can't? Okay.
That our television audience.
Sure, sure, so.
Shore is very large tonight. He can't hear us, hear you either. More significantly, the tape can't hear you.
My comment is pretty much with the Moncler Historic Preservation Commission's third recommendation, that the landscaping be added to maintain, well, the commissioner's recommended that landscaping be added and maintained around the planter wall to soften the look of the larger paved area. So, and I know that's what my colleague mentioned as well, so.
Yeah, sure, and I.
You already addressed that.
Yeah, I would just, we, we can't put anything outside of the wall without losing parking.
And right, and on top, then it would possibly obstruct looking into the re, the, the.
Exactly.
Retail space.
Obstruct. And, you know, I'd also like to note that the, the area we're proposing as the sunken patio and wall is interior, so it's contained fully within what was previously just proposed as a concrete pad.
What do you propose? Or could you propose, I mean, to?
I, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Hmm, so... To give it a softer look, so it's not so much of a, you know, a large paved area, what could you potentially look to propose or have done as opposed to, um, not putting planters around in that area?
I mean, there wasn't planters previously proposed on the approved plans, and we feel that putting in a, you know, nice brick wall and outdoor seating softens the look of a larger paved area. Um, whereas alternatively, we could have just left it as an open concrete slab, as previously approved. Um, we, we would like to put planters in there, but we don't have the room without losing parking, which we already have relief from the required parking. So we're already at a, a negative on parking.
But there will be tables out there?
Mm-hmm. That's the intent, is that there will have cafe tables out there for people to, who are visiting the coffee shop.
Maybe they'll have flowers on those, but that's, that's not a part of this conversation, but, you know. It's a nice area, you know, it's nice to inviting.
Restaurant.
Yeah.
Well, also too, I just want to, on the plan, it's showing there's plants along, on that wall.
On, on the architectural plan and, and.
Yeah, that, that's, that's not correct. That was a. That's not correct.
Yeah, that was an error of the architect.
Mr. Simon? Mr. Griffith?
That whole parking lot slopes back to the corner where this work is being done, is that right? The water drains back towards this corner, is that right?
Not the whole parking lot.
Okay.
A portion, a portion of it.
A good deal of it?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, a ridge line that kind of runs, you know, it, it cuts off this corner for, so.
Close enough.
Yeah, close enough.
Understood. So I saw on one of the drawings, one of the civil drawings, a large drain there at the corner of your thing. That's the existing drain to remain?
At the corner of the proposed patio?
Yeah.
No, that's a new drain we're putting in to catch that drainage from the parking lot.
Outside in the parking lot?
Yeah, exactly.
And from that drain coming up to your ramps that go down, that drain's lower than where the top of your ramps are, I assume?
No, that, then where the top, yes, that drain is, I had to think about what you're saying. That drain is lower than where the top of our ramps are.
Okay.
And so that'll catch everything that's outside. And then we're, um, you know, cleaning out and, you know, having re, re.
So in the lower sunken patio area?
Mm-hmm.
You have a drain?
Yes.
You have an overflow drain? It's not a trick question. So on a normal roof, it's by code that you have to have a drain, and then you have to have an overflow drain. The overflow drain's there in case the primary drain gets clogged, water goes down the overflow drain. And I asked, only asked this, and it's probably not relevant. Uh, I only, but it, that could be good to think about.
Yeah, no, it's.
You have doorways that seem to open onto this lower area, so if that, if, if you have one drain there and it goes clogged, they're going, the water's going to collect here and go inside the building. I'd be, um, I'm concerned about it, though it's not my problem. And, uh, your doorway's there, you'll probably want to have them up a little bit just because of this. I mean, you've got, you've created a bathtub in the corner here. And I appreciate, appreciate, uh, what you're doing, and I appreciate the intent, it's good. Just talking about some ideas that may help.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly look at it. I mean, it's been, that's one of the, one of the triggers for this project, is drainage and flooding issues that we've had with those fans.
So your architectural drawing, A 101. It has, um, a plan, which is O one, patio wall elevation O two, and a plan for detail O three. So ask your architect to key the plan and the section appropriately. The elevation's not key, and the section is identified as O one when the section's actually O three, and it's not a section he drew in elevation. And he called it a planner, he didn't draw a planner. I understand and agree with your point that the wall's not big enough to sponsor a meaningful planter. I don't, that's okay by me, I'm not, but if you're going to show a planner and call it a planner, then draw a planner, or not. And if you're going to show a section, draw a section, these drawings are not coordinated in a reasonable, consistent way. So it'd be appreciated if they were, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me follow up on that, because I guess, you know, as Mr. Griffith just pointed out, it's called a planner. Um, that normal, what plans, the architectural plans show plants. Uh, I understand, I'm going to give two thoughts. One, um, you know, I, I think even, you know, it's probably not wide enough to support shrubs, but it's certainly wide enough to support annuals in the spring, summer, and fall. Um, or alternatively, you could make it wider. It's, you know, this is not a decreed one foot, four inches wide, and make it wider. I agree with your comments as to the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation, but not putting plants around the side of it, you'll clearly lose a parking space, and more people are going to be walking in the dirt where they're planting and pushing their car doors into it. It's not a survivable situation, so. And I don't want to eliminate a parking space, that would provide enough room to accommodate that. But, um, um, I guess, you know, making it two feet wide is not going to impact the size of the patio in any meaningful way. You know, why not do that? Or why can't you have a planner that would at least have annuals in it during the growing season?
I mean, we, we'd need to evaluate that, you know. Currently, the wall is shown at a width that supports this wall being constructed as a concrete masonry unit core. If we're going to construct something that's wide enough to support vegetation in it, it's my professional experience that you would need something at least twelve to eighteen inches wide to have enough soil volume that you're not drying out consistently. So pretty quickly, we're at a wall that I think is probably much larger than, than two feet. Um, you know, I would think it's probably closer to two and a half or three feet, and we're starting to impact the area that we were hoping to use as outdoor cafe space. And again, you know, we're trying not to put anything vertical that would further obscure the views of the retail establishments behind there.
And I, you know, I understand that, and I'm not saying do it wide enough for shrubs that might do that, but having, you know, you know, even if you did a trailing vine, um, you know, I mean, I have window boxes that are on the sunny side of the house that are not even a foot wide, and plants grow in it from spring through the first killing frost. You know, and they're only like six inches deep. So I'm not, not sure why, even with this width, it couldn't support some plannings that would give a little relief and, I think, make it more attractive.
Okay.
And my, my other question is, I, we've gone over, there are currently two leaders that go down. One, it's at the corner where the entrance to the coffee shop is, and one, it looks like it's at the edge of where, um, the patio area is going to be along the east side of the building. Is this, what do those connect to now, and is, are your drainage improvements going to change how they connect? And, you know, I'm concerned it's other board, I need to make sure drainage goes away from the patio, which is obviously your concern as well, but just want to understand how, what happens now and what's going to happen with those two leaders.
Currently, those leaders go down and connect to a pipe that runs, um, parallel to the facade of the building. I'm trying to see how, it's marked on the survey how long it is.
There's two facades?
Yeah. Well, along that, um, southern-facing facade of the building.
Okay.
It's a twelve-inch clay pipe, and it actually goes under the building and, and discharges to Tony's Brook. We're maintaining, um, one of the leaders, the leader in the corner of the building, with that current drainage, as well as the area drain in the patio with that current drainage. But one of the things that we've seen is during large rain events, that we're getting, um, water, that the twelve-inch pipe is just no longer able to handle, or isn't able to handle the amount of rain that seems to be coming through there. So we're rerouting that roof leader to the existing, I believe it's a fifty-four-inch pipe, yeah, fifty-four-inch reinforced concrete pipe that's in Erie Street. And we did look at the implications, and that was provided with the implications of that water on that pipe. And that was provided with our, um, with our submission, and we talked to the township engineer about it. And the township engineer's opinion on it was that since there seemed to be, um, a room within that fifty-four-inch pipe for the additional, um, water that we're rerouting, and that it was kind of a, a very small amount, comparatively speaking, and that it would ultimately end up in the same drainage pretty quickly, that being Tony's Brook, that it was, it was kind of a wash in terms of, you know, the additional, um, water that we're adding.
Any other questions from members of the board? Any members of the audience who have questions?
Are you re, repaving any, uh, resloping?
We're, we're repaving the entire parking lot, and there's going to be some limited regrading. And regrading is probably not the, not the proper word. Um, we, we're unable to really change the elevations of the parking lot by a lot because we need to get back into the, you know, for lack of a better term, the wonky elevations of the existing buildings that are up and down. So we're going to do limited, uh, we're going to repave the, or re, resurface the entire lot, and there'll be limited, uh, you know, re, regrading with that, stick out bird baths in areas where water sits, but, but we're not really proposing a wholesale re, regrading of the lot.
But you've taken into consideration, I guess, like a drainage study, so that there's a good amount of runoff and no pooling, or, you know, with this site kind of having drainage issues, have you?
This is really the only drainage issue associated with the site. The majority of the site either goes to existing, um, inlets on site or it's surface drains to Tony's Brook. And Tony's Brook forms the western boundary on our neighbor's property.
Okay, all right, so it'll be a very heavily used, used area, Sharon Miller's dance studio, right? So a lot of folks are going to be walking over there, so.
You bet.
Want to make sure that it's safe and, you know, for folks of all ages.
Absolutely.
We have nothing further, Mr. Chair, and I, I don't have any concluding comments. I submit to the board.
Okay, we'll start discussion, Mr. Church.
Yeah, having, uh, worked on this project before, when, uh, the dance studio was proposed, it's, uh, it's a nice area to have activity in. And I think that the, uh, the, the use of the property to drop the patio, and it makes it more attractive for use by the coffee shop and, uh, generally speaking. Uh, I believe that the need for planters along the wall, uh, it's although nice, I don't think it's that necessary. I think a starker appearance could be enough to improve, uh, or to support that, uh, area that you're dropping. So I'd be in favor of the application, minus the need for, um, planters along the top of the wall.
Mr. Caulfield?
I'm in favor. Um, I, I, just slight concerns is like, we're bringing more people to this location. It is a parking lot, and I have fears about that, but I'm in favor, thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Um, I'm, uh, in favor of the, this amendment. Um, I disagree with Mr. Church. I think it would be nice to have something to soften. There's so much gray and concrete and asphalt and everything here. I think it would make a nicer environment for the coffee shop, um, customers. But, um, generally, I'm in favor of the sunken patio.
Ms. Grant?
I'm in, I'm in favor of the project.
Mr. Moore?
I'm also in favor of the application, in addition to having some planters in that area to soften it.
Mr. Simon?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Griffith?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. I, I mean, I think this is not significantly changing our prior site plan approval. I, you know, I came in here saying, well, okay, it's not necessary to do the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission because they're proposing planters with showing things growing in the planters. And I, I, you know, understand the concern of the Historic Preservation Commission. I also understand our concern of not wanting to eliminate parking spaces. But, um, I just think, and I, you know, the, the two wider stretches of the wall, not this stretch that's parallel to the south-facing part of the facade that's, uh, adjacent to the ramp going down that facade. I just think it would be better to have, you know, seasonal plannings in, in those. And I think that can be accommodated either with the existing width or, um, with making it somewhat wider if they want to have greater dirt area to somewhat reduce the watering requirements. But, um, it's the one area where in disagreement, but someone needs to make a motion with or without. We should also condition it that they remain subject to the conditions of our approval for the Sharon Miller Dance Studio.
Make a motion to approve it based on the conditions of the Sharon Williams Dance Studio, as well as, um, planters as recommended by the Montclair Historic Preservation Commission.
Hold on. You mean seasonal plantings as talked about by the chairman?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Might call the roll.
Hold on. So they have to put the plantings, I'm saying, or some kind of plantings on top of the wall? Versus some other alternative they might want to do on the tables to soften it up?
Pep, I was, I was going to ask that question, but I was going to wait until after.
Better do it. Don't wait until after the motion.
I guess, I guess my, my question would be, what if we were to, on the lower level, put in like some larger, um, like on the level where the cafe chairs are, put in some larger, like, um, terracotta planters or something like that? Where we could have, you would be able to see the vegetation above the wall because it's a pretty, a pretty low wall, and it would soften it. But then that would also bring that down to the level of the people who were, you know, sitting within there.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be concerned about obstructing the use to your tenants?
Well, if, if the planters are at the lower, I'm saying on the lower level. So if the planters are at the lower level, you would see the vegetation above.
What height vegetation are you thinking?
It would, you know, I would, you know, if we're, we're probably do ornamental grasses or something like that, but low enough that you could see the green above, and we could stipulate that, you know, the seasonal vegetation, you know, must be high enough, or at least a portion of it to be seen, you know, above, above the wall. But, you know, it's a, it's a forty-two-inch wall on the backside. I would think to, in, to get the volume, we would put in probably a thirty-six-inch high planter. So almost anything at that point, almost anything you put in is going to be at least eight inches tall. You would see it from the outside. eight inches tall, because you would see it from the outside.
Mr. Griffith?
Yeah, I like the idea of a tall grass, and I suggest that a planter on the lower level, adjacent to where the parked cars are, might provide some separation of the people of the patio and the cars and the parked car scent, and you could still leave the corner open so that you get the visibility that you want to get. I think that may be at least as good as an approach. I noticed in the set of drawings, Langen, nice, big set of drawings, L Series, O1, 501, 502, sight lighting, site planter. We're not looking at that, right?
Those were the previously approved drawings.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I didn't, I, I just saw him and ignored him, I just wanted to make sure I was doing the right thing.
No, I had the same question. Why are we getting a giant set of plans for a little tiny project? And I realize they just sent the prior plans. I mean, I don't have a problem with giving them the choice of doing that.
So I'd try to modify your motion to...
Sure. I make a motion to approve the application. Yes, I make a motion to approve the application based on the planters that were mentioned in the retail area patio portion.
I would rephrase it just so that they offer some type of...
Option.
What was the option, to put some source of vegetation either on the wall or on their patio?
If it's on the patio, it has to be higher than the, than the wall.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the application with type of vegetation that's above the wall to soften the area.
And subject to the conditions that were proposed as part of the prior approval that are not inconsistent here, what?
Correct.
Second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? See you all in the first week in February.